Legislative business. We will have our opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harms way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. This time we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk, please call the role.
Councilman White. Councilwoman Bedarby.
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field. Councilwoman Cabrera. Councilman Mills.
Present.
Councilman Spadola. Councilwoman Bracy.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
Nine present and four absent.
Also for the record, councilmember Spadola, McCoy, and Field asked to be excused. This time we have the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
May 18, 2023, City Council Madam Regular Session with Remote Participation on the Above Date at 6:30 PM. President Ernest M. Congo II presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk. The Pledge of Allegiance was recited by City Council.
Mr. President, there was a correction to the minutes. There was one tally vote that was inadvertently misstated by the clerk from May 18th. It's council meeting for which I have correction to be made to the minutes as followed. Let the record request to act reflect that the actual vote for resolution number 23-023 and gender item 0304, which is a resolution for fiscal year 2022 Annual Action Plan, substantial amendment is to be seven yeas for present and two absent. I'll now move that the minutes be as corrected as accepted as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that the minutes as corrected be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This time we have our city treasurer's report.
June 1st, 2023. Total investment $484,418,506.55. Total cash on hand $18,357,320.65. Grand total $502,775,827.20 submitted by Dwayne Sims, City Treasurer.
Mr. President, I move that the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
And Mr. President, I move to accept all non-legislative business.
I'll accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried. This time we will go to our recognition resolutions. First, I'm going to ask for Councilmember Oliver to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to ask for Corporate Damian Weiss and anyone that's here to support him and the officers or families to please come down front, stand up here with me, please. Any officers or friends here from the police department, could you please come down front or families here to support Mr. Corporate? I really would appreciate if y'all come down. Thank you. Appreciate it. Come right here. Oh, they barked the dog. My God. I know y'all got it. You could come, that's yours. Come on over here. Okay. This is different. Okay. First, I'd like to say something about Mr. Officer Corporate Weiss. I've been knowing him for years. He's always had a dog with him and I, that used to drive me crazy. I should just speak. He always wants to run up. I'm like, no, stay over there with the dog. But this is a resolution that's overdue and well deserved. This is from all councilmembers and I'm the sponsor. Whereas, it's the sense of City Council to honor individuals who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Master Corporate Damon Al Weiss has served on a national and city level and has been very well-known throughout the city. And whereas, Master Corporate Weiss returned home from his service with the United States Marine Corps in 1990 and 1991. He began, he began and was sworn in as a law enforcement officer in Wilmington Police Department, Wilmington PD. And whereas, in 1989, Damon became the first African-American in Wilmington PD K-9 unit and later was the first African-American to lead the unit. He is certified trainer, advisor, officer, and conducted the only two WPD K-9s seminars held by the Wilmington Police Department. Master Vice, Officer Corporate Weiss, has personally trained 14 K-9s for law enforcement agencies in New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland, and served as a field trainer officer for numerous offices, including Captain Andre Javon, retired Captain Williams, Gillen, Sergeant Bryant McCain, Sergeant Will, et cetera. And whereas, among his many accomplishments, Master Corporate Weiss was the first African-American to be named to the Eastern Police K-9 Association, EPCA, and represents Delaware in the association. He has been honored three times at the Delaware State House of Representatives for Outstanding Community Services. He has, he has received multiple distinct unit citations and distinguished service awards, a Class A Service Award, and three outstanding service awards, outstanding for his work. And now, there be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that the city is pleased to recognize Master Corporate Damon Weiss for his extraordinary contribution to the Wilmington Police Department. Job well done.
All right, you're gonna have to bear with me. I can, I can speak to people about breaking up crowds and everything, but when I gotta speak in front of...
Phew. All right.
All right, so here it goes. I give it my best. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed guests and fellow Trailblazers. Let me get comfortable. Today is a truly remarkable day in my 54 years of life, and I'm honored to stand before you and accept this prestigious recognition award. I am overwhelmed with happiness. As you can tell, I'm emotional. Gratitude, humility, as I receive this high distinction, allow me to express my deepest appreciation to each and every one of you who has made this possible, includes all of you, my colleagues. First and foremost, I'd like to thank my Lord Savior because without Jesus Christ, none of this would be made possible. So I'm forever, I'm forever grateful for his unwavering presence in my life. Excuse me. As you can tell, I am human, you know? I don't like to show that at work, but... Hang on, maybe this will help. Hang on a second. I extend a heartfelt thank you to Councilwoman Santi Oliver, Norman, Council President Congo, and the sitting councilmembers. Your support and belief in me has been instrumental in my journey throughout my career. I am grateful for your leadership and commitment to our community. To those who nominated me and supported my nomination for this recognition, I'm deeply gratified for your, I'm sorry, I'm deeply grateful for your trust and belief in my abilities. Your encouragement has been a source of information, your encouragement has been a source of inspiration for me throughout my career. I must take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to my beautiful wife, my children, my colleagues, my extended family, and my friends. You guys' unwavering support and presence here tonight mean the world to me. Your love and encouragement have been my rock, enabling me to face challenges head-on and achieve milestones I never dreamed possible. Bear with me, it's only a little bit more. You know, as I stand here and all, I'm reminded, I'm reminded of my humble beginnings, growing up as a young black kid in the projects, losing my father at the tender age of eight, becoming the first of my generation to attend college. I could never have imagined standing before you as a recipient of this award. This recognition is a testament to the strength and perseverance, perseverance and power of determination. Ah, my goodness. Receiving an award of this magnitude prompts reflection upon one's career, especially at my age. I've received numerous accolades throughout the years, the 33 years, from saving lives to receiving NADA Boys Outstanding Service Awards, unit citations, and even House of Representative Awards. However, I must confess that none compare to the profound honor of being recognized tonight and etching my name into history alongside the great Trailblazers and historymakers I have always admired and respected. So allow me to take a moment to share with you a little bit of the history of the K-9 Unit. K-9 Unit was established in the 1950s. It was strictly dogs that were there for apprehension. As most of you may know, that in the 1968s, we had the race riots, and the K-9 Unit was just used as bite dogs on, on people of color. Shortly thereafter, the unit was disbanded, and approximately 27 years later, the Wilmington Police Department got the authorization to run a trial pilot program to bring back the K-9 Unit. That pilot program ran with one dog, one handler. After successful run of three years in 1998, it was open for more officers who wanted to, who showed interest in the unit and had to apply to get in. I was one of those officers, and after all the strenuous tests, psychological tests and physical tests, I was chosen to come aboard that unit. You know, while, while I'm doing that, I'm sorry, I said, while I'm doing that... So as I stated, in February 1998, after successfully completing the required exams, evaluations, during, I became a member of the Wilmington Police K-9 Unit. During my nine years in the K-9 Unit, I had the privilege of working with, working with and certifying three incredible police dogs. My first one was Rick, second one was Vince, and the last one was Gizmo. All three were what's known as Belgian Malinois. During my tenure, during my tenure as that, working there, I attended more classes on my own, where I went out certified under the Eastern Police K-9 Association and NAPLADA, National Association of Work Dogs Association, and I got, okay, more certifications and all. In closing, since I'm being, I have, like a time, um... Like I said, I just want to profess my profound gratitude and just leave you guys with this. Behind every, behind every, behind every effort is passion. Behind every passion is someone with, with the courage to try. So if I didn't, if you didn't know this then, you didn't know who I was then, today you know, in the great words of Dr. Martin Luther King, "I am somebody."
Good evening, Council President, Council Members, fellow officers, and audience and community at large in Wilmington. I just want to say once again, let's give him a big round of applause. It's a, it's a great accomplishment of what he's done. I'll share a quick story. Damian and I kind of ran with the same people when we were younger on the West Side, even though he's a couple years older than me, a couple years older than me. I always looked up to Damian as a role model, even way back when we were young teenagers. He always held himself with the highest standard and always took care of the younger friends that he had. So I just want to say that this is, this is no surprise what Damian has turned out to be. He's a tremendous officer, and he's always, always has been a role model for his fellow, fellow officers on the department. So this is just a culmination of what he's done, and congratulate him again. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you so much. Y'all have a good one. Appreciate y'all coming. Wow. Congratulations.
Councilmember Mills.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And could I get my beautiful ladies and gentlemen that are wearing orange to come up with me, please? For Gun Violence Awareness Week. Yes. Yes. That's what they say. I look like my brother. I've been hearing it all day. Yes. Could be twins, man. All right. On behalf of all of City Council, we just wanted to recognize Gun Violence Awareness Week. And whereas, the first Friday in June marks National Gun Violence Awareness Day, the City of Wilmington Council wishes to remember the lives lost to gun violence, honor survivors of gun-related traumas, and raise awareness about this public health crisis. And whereas, every day about 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and about 230 are injured in an average year, more than 40,000 die and another 84,000 are wounded by guns nationally. Nearly 8 in 10 murders and nearly half of the suicides in the United States involve a firearm. And whereas, Delaware has the 25th highest gun-related fatalities in the U.S., we average about 111 Delawareans are killed by guns every year. Firearms death injuries cost the state of Delaware an estimated $714 million annually. There were 26 shootings and 31 victims in Wilmington between January 1 and May 14, 2023. In 2020, there were 83 shootings and 118 victims and 17 homicides. And whereas, gun violence prevention is more than, more important than ever with all the mass shootings, ghost gun sales, and youth firearm-related violence. There has been an average of 10 mass shootings per year in the United States this year alone. And whereas, January 23rd, January 2013, Hadia Peddleton, a 15-year-old African-American girl from Chicago, Illinois, was shot in the back and killed while standing with friends in a park just one week after performing at events for President Obama's second inauguration. Gun violence awareness recognizes the birthday of Hadia Peddleton as well as many other gun violence victims and their loved ones. And whereas, Hadia's friends commemorate her life by wearing orange, a color that hunters wear to be visible and prevent shooting accidents in the woods. Orange is also a color that symbolizes the value of human life. One gun, on gun violence awareness day, people are encouraged to wear orange to recognize, bring awareness, and recognize and reflect on the violence and the victims and the survivors of firearms. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Wilmington and the Council that this legislative body recognizes June 2nd as National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all citizens to wear orange and support their community's efforts to bring an awareness to the tragic effects of gun violence and honor those lives lost. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilman Mills, and all City Council members also. My name is Anne McWalter, and I'm the volunteer lead for the Northern Group of Moms Demand Action, and I'm also Survivor Fellow for Every Town for Gun Safety. I would like to express our gratitude to City Council for their support of the Fifth Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Across the country, this public health crisis of gun violence has continued to devastate communities and families. But as the incidence of gun violence grow, so too has the movement to stop it. Moms Demand Action will continue to educate, raise awareness, organize, and rally for safer communities. We appreciate City Council giving us a space for this work and for them to work with us for solutions for the future, because together, we know we can build a future free from gun violence. Thank you very much. And thank you.
Councilmember Oliver.
I'm sorry. I just, if you could come up, yes, please, and just share this picture. This is one of our young men, Poppy, that was lost.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lenita Brooks. I lost my son, Deshaun Sellers. We call him Poppy. February 16th, 2015. So this is Poppy. This was given to me at our third annual Mother's Day brunch this year.
Beautiful. Thank you. I just want...
Councilmember Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work that y'all do throughout the city, throughout the state, and keep up the good work.
Councilmember Johnson.
I just want to echo those sentiments. As I know, I've worked with Anne and Mara, we've done Zooms together, we've worked together on the ground, and there's still so much more work we have to do, and thank you for helping push us on council to do the best and to set the precedent for the state, because I believe, you know, we're passing these ideas at the city level and pushing it to the state. We got assault weapon bans. We got a lot more work to do with safe storage that's on the agenda this year, so we, you know, we look forward to helping hopefully get that over the finish line. So thank you for the work all of you do, all the moms.
Thank you. And Councilmember Johnson, if you want to come forward.
I'm actually giving this presentation for Councilmember Cabrera. Is anyone here for AAPI? Okay. All right, well, it's, I am here to celebrate Asian American Heritage Month, whereas it's the sense of City Council to acknowledge special events and individuals that need recognition. Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is such an occasion. Whereas in 1977, Representative Frank Horton in New York and Senator Dan Ione of Hawaii brought forth legislation in U.S. Congress to commemorate the history and contribution of Asian Americans. They chose the first 10 days of May and remember to the first Japanese immigrants in May 1843 to honor the many Chinese railroad workers who drove to completion of the Transnational Railroad in May 10, 1869. Whereas motivated by the promise of possibilities, individuals throughout the region of Asia picked up their lives and found a new one in this country. The 10-day celebration of May soon changed the entire month to recognize Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and Asian Americans, the rich cultural heritage of America's oldest ethnic groups. During Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Wilmington celebrates the diversity of cultures, breadth of achievement, and remarkable contributions these communities make each year to our, to our state. Despite the racism, harassment, and hate crimes against those communities every day, millions of people are, are creating their own definitions of what it means to be Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander living in America. We celebrate the diverse tapestry of these communities, uplift their voices, and look forward to a community of future healing and strength. Whereas, the Delaware Asian American Business Association provides information and advocates for small business owners. Not only have they worked tirelessly to amplify diverse voices in the business sector, they also have played an active role building the cultural bridges in our city and state. Through their support in the annual Diwali Fest, the organization provides a platform to showcase Hindu culture as well as opportunities for all Delawareans to appreciate the influence of Asian American culture. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this Council is pleased to recognize Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, AAPI, and HPI, and commend the Delaware Asian American Business Association for their efforts to build a more diverse and inclusive and well-represented state. Job well done.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Drupal Patel. I am the president of DABA, which is Delaware American Asian Business Association. I would like to thank the Councilwoman Maria Cabrera. On behalf of DABA, I would like to express my sincere thanks and appreciation for this honor that has been given to us by the Wilmington City Council members. Thank you for supporting diversity, equality, and inclusion. This is a great honor and one that will be whole dear to our hearts. We look forward to building stronger relationships in the future. Thank you, Hannah. Good evening. Thank you. 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 And I just wanted to say again, I appreciate DABA for coming and supporting. This is very important, and I think sometimes we overlook just how diverse Wilmington is, that there's intersectionality in terms of talking about combating racism and combating harassment and hatred. And we're at a point in America where hatred and hate crimes against the AAPI community is at its highest spin. So we continue to support our brothers and sisters. You know, groups try to pit us together against each other, but we have to be standing as one against racism and hate. So again, I look forward to celebrating with you all. And as City Council, please let us know what we can do to support you. Thank you.
Also, as far as sympathy resolutions from Councilwoman Cabrera, a sympathy resolution for Felicita Perez Crespo Burgos, and from Councilwoman Oliver, a sympathy resolution for Vern Oates. At this time, we will move into public comment. And just as, again, as a friendly reminder, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat for any Wilmington resident who resides in any of our 8 councilmatic districts or taxpayers who would like to speak. Your time limit is 3 minutes. Please keep your comments of general matters pertaining to Wilmington's councilmatic districts or City Council business. And please do not address any council members directly, but please direct all of your comments to me as the president. And also, please be careful when you're coming forward as you step onto the podium. We do have several public speakers this evening, so we are going to have to strictly adhere to our 3-minute timeframe. Once you come forward, once you're called and come forward, you'll be able to see a monitor to your lower right, and that will also give you your time. And I will give you a friendly reminder when you have 30 seconds left. First, we have Alfred Garrato. Again, thank you for joining us, and please watch your step as you come up to the podium, and please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. President and Councilmembers, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. My reason for addressing the council is related to the ongoing terrible conditions that the Gibraltar Mansion site, located at the corner of Green Hill and Pennsylvania Avenues, exists today. I'm a 30-year-plus resident of the City of Wilmington and president of the Greenhouse Place Homeowners Association, which is adjacent to the Gibraltar site and the Coffrin Gardens at Gibraltar. I am an original owner of a home in Greenhouse Place, which was developed in 1993. And my home is the former abode of the head gardener and horticulturalist of the Gibraltar site, built in the 1920s and completely rehabbed. My association members and myself have endured 30 years of neglect related to the mansion, its associated buildings and grounds. We have experienced four plans and attempts to repurchase the site over the years as the site deteriorated due to neglect, and the condition of the site has reached a point that is unbearable for our association and other adjacent neighbors. The most recent plan for the development of the site has been abandoned for whatever reason without notice. The conservation easement, which governs the site, was conveyed to the State of Delaware in 1997 by the Sharp Family Trust and contains a series of enforcement rights and duties which are unambiguous to preserve and protect the conservation values of the property by any owner. In 2010, the property was conveyed to Gibraltar Preservation Group, and since that time, the property has been neglected and allowed to deteriorate to a state of terrible disrepair, which now requires enforcement of the provisions of the Conservation Easement Agreement against the current owners. It is a blight on the neighborhood. Rather than discuss any details any further, I would like to place on the record a document dated 5 April, 2023, complied by the neighbors of Gibraltar, which contains detailed renderings and all other requests for steps to professionally mothball the mansion and its building. Also, I'd like to put on the record two other documents related to the subject and ask the council for their involvement so that we can collectively solve the very challenging situation which has been neglected for a generation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, where might I leave these documents?
You can leave them with, I'm curious. Chey, is there a Chey with us? C-H-E-Y. Chey. Next, we have Dwight Davis. And Brother Abdullah Bay. Again, for anyone who has public comment this evening, please keep your comments to 3 minutes, and I will give you a friendly reminder when you have 30 seconds left. Please watch your step as you're coming up to the podium. Please remember to introduce yourself. And if you, when you're at the podium, when you're looking to the right, you'll see the monitor that can give you your time also. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. President. Members of Wilmington City Council, citizens of Wilmington, my name is Brother Dwight L. Davis, and I'm here this evening to speak as a member of the ANDA Reparations and Freedom Coalition. In 2018, Governor John Carney signed a 50-year lease agreement with Gulf Tainer, a United Arab Emirates company. This agreement was a two-party agreement between the State of Delaware, represented by the Diamond State Port Corporation, and Gulf Tainer. It should have been a three-party contract that included the City of Wilmington. 18-049 is an ordinance that was introduced in this council for a first and second. And included in that ordinance was a cash amount of $2.6 million. This ordinance, 18-049, never went to committee, and thus, as I'm told, it died along the way. But the question is, where is the $2.6 million? So I'm making a request today that President Congo and all those that he assigned would request a meeting with the treasurer, with the auditor, and with the law department that constructed that ordinance agreement to meet with us so that we can determine what happened to the $2.6 million. The State of Delaware is in the process of negotiating a separate agreement without Gulf Tainer being involved, and we need to know what is the position of the City of Wilmington. So this is my request, and I want to thank publicly Councilperson Shanae Darby Bay. Because of her, the Wilmington City Council Reparations Task Force will begin to meet in the public where it should have been from the beginning. And the next meeting, I'm told, is the 14th of June, and we will be meeting in the committee chamber. So I want to thank Councilperson Darby for her participation in making that happen. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Abdullah Bay? Just before you start, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Maria Cabrera. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Evening, Council President and Councilmembers. I'm Abdullah Mohamed Bay from the hilltop of Wilmington. I'm on the same subject I was several times. I came here before. Drug and alcohol and mental health. You know, we had a serious problem here. The group that came talking about violence, there's a lot of violence out there. Most of it is stemming from drugs and alcohol. You know, in the field that I'm in, I like what I'm doing, you know, because I'm coming from that generation where you see a problem, you try to address it. Because if you're not part of the problem, you're part of the solution. We got a serious problem here. As I walk around and drive around and work at Howard Young and probation, and I'm dealing with a lot of these individuals incarcerated and being released. Some of them become homeless, have nowhere to go, and so forth and so on. So Delaware got money. Ain't no problem with no money. It's just not being addressed in those areas that need the help. Taxpayers, you know, we, so we got to do something. So I'm just here to reiterate what I said before. I'm trying to maybe possibly turn my mother's house into a drug and alcohol mental health facility, a program. Because that's how sincere I am about what I'm trying to do. You know, so again, I'd just like to close with, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Malloy?
And just for clarity, I'll be going to the next meeting for the Reparations Task Force. That date has not yet been set, but we will announce that date publicly when it's been set. Thank you. Kevin Malloy, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Mr. President, all council members, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience here in the chambers as well as on the WITN. I'm here to speak about a group I started back in the early 2000s called WEN. We Have Empowerment Now. In the 2000s, the meetings or the rallies were for the vacant housing issue in Wilmington, which was thousands of vacant houses in Wilmington. And we're able to empower the citizens at different vacant homes and to address that issue. In the 2010s, we focused more on peace and the gun violence in Wilmington. And I was able to work with Yunita Fede and Alfie Moss and others and have rallies around the city to encourage peace through the arts. In the 2020s, one of my focuses now is on the ecological issues of Wilmington. So I'm going to host four rallies this summer that'll be on Thursday at 5:00 p.m. at the following locations. And I'm inviting all of the public, and I'll be inviting all the council members, letting you know the dates and time to see if you'd like to be involved. The first one will be June 15th at the corner of West 7th and North Harrison. This was the location I had a building at one point, and I was able to work with others up for years, but this is 7 years ago. We established the first designated bike lane in Wilmington. It was in the 700 and the 800 block of North Harrison with the vision of continuing this bike lane down North Harrison to Beach Street left, come back to North Van Buren to Brandywine Park, and we'd have a bike loop route for citizens for leisure and for actually transportation. It also is a great issue for traffic calming, which is a huge issue in Wilmington that we need to address, is traffic calming. Addressing issues with the people first, not the cars first. The next rally would be on June 29th, and this is to follow up with the Del Dot 2021 project, which was to restore the corridor, which is Del Dot, what they called it. And they came into the City of Wilmington for 2 years for $200 million. But from my perspective, it's really a $200 million for the automobiles for the City of Wilmington. I would like to question if there was any of the public input used to any of the changes that were made or things that weren't done. But anyway, the rally's going to be focused at the Adams Street Courts. There are now going to be five basketball courts. There were two courts that built temporarily for Del Dot 21. Part of the green space was eliminated. So the rally on June 29th will be for furthering the City of Wilmington's involvement in creating green space. The next two, I'll do very briefly. July 6th will be at the Brandywine Park at the Swinging Bridge to encourage the completion of the restoration of the Mill Road Connector, which is a pedestrian walkway from the Swinging Bridge up to the Mill Road, where 700 new homes have been built in the Highlands, and they need to have more pedestrian. The last one will be July 20th, 9th, and Rodney at the Rodney Street Reservoir Park. The founding was Save the Garden Rally in May of '22, and we're now going to encourage and empower the green for the greater good to make sure that this remains a green space in the City of Wilmington. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that we extend public comment past 7:30. We do have several more residents who have signed up. Let's move to the second to extend public comment past 7:30. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have Jermaine Miller. Thank you for joining us, and please watch your step as you approach the podium. And please remember to introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Jermaine Miller. I'm glad to be here. I am here as a resident of Wilmington. I'm here to say my frustration on your handicap parking. My fiance and I moved here, and we have had a hard time getting a parking permit. They told us to go downtown here, and I got the paperwork, but it is discrimination because you have to have 20 signatures from neighbors. And if you can't walk, how are you supposed to get these signatures? I guess I'm supposed to get it, but I'm not the handicap person. But my neighbors, they don't even speak to me. You say hi to them, they don't even say hi back. And everybody has two and three cars. We only have one car and cannot get a handicap parking. He has the Delaware placard. I have called the ADA. They said that, you know, it's not up to the neighbors to decide if you're going to get parking or not. So this must be an old slip. I don't know. And I talked to, when I talked to the ADA, she gave me somebody's name that is in charge, Tanya Phillips, the ADA coordinator. She said she would get back to me. She didn't get back to me. There's also a blue line. I have a picture. There's a blue line there. You would think that people would not park there because there's a blue line that's already been there, but it's faint, and people park there anyway. And it's just very frustrating that we cannot go anywhere after 4:00 p.m. because everybody comes home with their two and three cars, and there's no place to park. And with summer coming, with the gas coming, there's really no place to park. And like tonight, people like to go see the Nuggets play at a sports bar, but can't because there won't be any parking. You'd have to park miles away, you know, if you're not home by 4 o'clock. We have to be home at 4 o'clock. So that's my frustration about your, and we're taxpayers, and we own our house, and we cannot go anywhere after 4 o'clock.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have your contact information, so we will connect you with your council representative. Thank you. Next, we have Bernice Torres. And please remember to introduce yourself, and please be careful when you approach the podium. And you'll be able to see the time monitor to your lower right-hand side. And I'll give you a friendly 30-second reminder. Thank you.
Good evening, President Congo.
Good evening, President Congo, um, council members as well. So my family and I are eighth district, uh, where we currently live. We have been racially harassed since February 16th. Who? The lady who harassed us is.
Excuse me, Ms. Torres. Can you just speak into the mic a little closer, please?
So.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolishen, prominent Delaware lawyer, ex deputy attorney general, has several law firms throughout, uh, all three counties, Newcastle, Kent and Sussex. So not only did she racially harass my husband, myself, I have a 14 year old son. We moved into the eighth district to give our son a better way of living. Now we have to keep our child and ourselves prisoner in our own home. Uh, we've reached out to council members. We've had false complaints that we're squatters, we're rodents, we don't belong there. Just false complaints, not only to Wilmington Police to license and inspection, to allegedly one of your council members has also filed false complaints where we haven't even met. Where is the justice? This has gone to where we have filed complaints with the American Bar Association. Um, we've done complaints as far as Wilmington Police. I didn't bring my cards with me, but we were told to leave the precinct by house sergeants, go back home, dial a non-emergency number. To where my husband and I have stayed up till after 1:00 AM and didn't get a call, didn't have anyone come out to the home, to where we called back and said, you know, we have work in the morning. We have to go to bed. So, and this is not on one occasion, two occasions. We have five blue cards. We've been to Wilmington Police Station seven times. It's now handed over to the Attorney General. Mr. President, I'm asking you, what do we do? Where is our justice? Because had it have been my husband, my son, or I, we would have been arrested by now. Justice would have been served. We would have been on trial, fast tracked, probably would have had a bail that nobody could afford to pay. But because this woman is who she is and they keep allowing her to get away with this. And then, uh, the captain of our area wants us to sit down and have a conversation. Wilmington Police, three officers have filed reports, have done their job. But why do you want to sit down now and have a conversation? The damage is done. I have a 14 year old child with an IEP who is an honor roll student that works diligently every day. Where does justice come in? What is it that we can do? How can you guys assist us? We shouldn't have to be a prisoner in our own home. And this has been since February 16th, up until when they tried to attack my 14 year old child. And he's taking out trash and has to run back in the house. These people are out here cursing at me and alleging we scratched their car. Uh, we put hits on them and everything has been unfounded. Where we have video footage. If any of you may not have seen, or if you haven't, it surfaced. Um, we did interviews, so you can find it, uh, through the YouTube channel at Eason Fair Baptist Church, through the source. We were told to pull your phone out and camcorder. When you have a woman acting like a crazed animal, early in the morning or at night when we're coming home, who's, has time to pull out a camera? But instead, we went and brought cameras and put up around her home. So not only did you have our word, you now have video footage. We're now in June. It was gone overlooked because we didn't have footage. The American Bar Association, the Office of Disciplinary has the footage. The footage has now been presented to where the public can see it. Where's our justice? How do we get justice? How can we be helped? And we have a council member allegedly sending emails, making false complaints that we're squatters. Where's his group? And under the Freedom of Information Act, we should be able to see the complaints as well as these emails. Like enough is enough. We're tired, emotionally drained, physically drained. Like it's too much. My husband, he can speak and my child can speak as well because they have went through this. My husband took the brunt of it. And again, February 16th, we're on June 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Elias Torres.
Good morning, President Congo. Good morning.
Hello.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I'm tired. Um, I just want to say that, um, I want my justice. Cause if I would have reacted, I'd be sitting over 12th Street. For sure. And I reached out to you as well as others and I ain't going to stop till I get it. I shouldn't have to leave work, fly down 95, get to the police station, ask, you know, the sergeant. He want to get smart. One of his colleagues telling me behind his back, calm down. Then he want to hurry up and grab his ba, uh, his cam, camera and all that, like, come on, man. Tired. And I, and I ain't going to stop. And then if I got to march whatever, bring my people to the eighth district, then I'm going to do it. And it's not a threat, it's a promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Seon Millie. Um, so when I was taking out trash on the day of May 24th, I was harassed by Jody. So she, so she allegedly, she actually ran down on me with her dog in her hands and told me, um, you're going to jail. You, you and your father are going to jail. You, you allegedly scratched my vehicle. So I'm just looking like, like who was she talking to? Cause like I, like I'm minding my business. I don't even know what she was talking about. And I shouldn't have to go through this anyway, because with me, I'm like, I'm in my business. All I do is go to school, come home. I don't do anything else. And if I do do something else, it'll be with my aunt's permission. So I should not have to go through, me have to looking out the window in the morning or, or looking out the window when we leave or when we come home. Cause I don't, cause like if I keep doing that, I, like I'm, like I'm feeling scared now that like I have to watch my back every time when I leave the house to go to the park or go ride my bike with my friends. Like I don't want to go through this.
Thank you. Thank you, family.
Thank you.
Charlie Waymoth. Please introduce yourself. Please watch your step as you approach the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Charlie Waymoth, resident, 43 years of West Center City and remaining and ongoing. 51 years practice independent architect. I think the comments regarding Gibraltar need to be augmented. It's commendable that you would wish that the mansion house be at least mothballed. If it's mothballed, it's another indication of a dead entity obstructing a really nationally registered garden. And my suggestion, and it reaches beyond what the immediacy of this agenda is tonight, is that the city stop considering giving or purchasing or loaning the 16th Street right of way and extended right of way to any entity outside. Leave it the way it is if you have to. With the mansion, reduce it to a size that can be kept in a commendable state and in the elegance that it was during the 30s and 40s. And it's, time is up for this developer. The proper authority must retake the property and rethink what to do with it. But firstly and foremost, by this council, stop any kind of gift conveyance or sale of that right away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carl Williams. Is Carl Williams still with us? Thank you for joining us this evening. And please introduce yourself and watch your step as you approach the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Carl Vincent Williams. I was in the public school system for 30 years as an art teacher. I worked in the Brandywine School District. I retired in the Christiana School District. I worked at Moore Academy. Uh, right now I am a freelance artist where I'm doing work around the community and everything. The problem that I'm having now, I live at 405 West 6th Street. I'm the one who practically runs our neighborhood because I help, um, Mr. Beard, who is a, um, runs a, um, a law firm. And there's across the street, there is a, um, the nuns are there too. So I get out in the morning, help clean up around the area, I police the area. Um, we do have a garden over there on West Street that I help run as well. Um, we do have a lot of, um, people who do, who do not live in that neighborhood, who surface every night and deal with drugs. We have a quiet neighborhood. It's clean. I do go to our meetings or I do talk to the police department. Um, the problem that I'm having at, with myself is that there's a young man who, um, came into the neighborhood, start selling drugs. And I did approach him. He was one of my ex students back in the day. And I came outside one day and there was a, um, a bike in between our car. And my neighbor was across the street because where I was, it was a lot of sun. He was over there in the shade. I asked who bike it was and apparently the young man heard me. He was down on the corner and he was selling these drugs. He said, well, watch my bike for him. I said, I'm not going to watch your bike for you. It's not my doing. So I stepped back inside, getting ready to close my door. Lo and behold, somebody came along, picked his bike up, took off with it. 15 minutes later, he came to my house, knocked on my door, where's my bike? I told him, I don't know where your bike is, man. I tell you, I wasn't watching your bike. It's not my responsibility. Last year, came outside, always walk around my car, but I had to take it to the Cadillac dealership to get, um, get a service. And 15 minutes, um, Bob came back out and said, I need to see about your car. I thought one of the people who was working on my car had scratched it or something. This person had keyed my car from the front taillight to the back taillight. Caught my insurance right there. They said they would take care of it. They did take care of it. The duck bill was 500. To get my car fixed was $5,800. This year, which was February the 23rd, he came back again and keyed my car again.
Thirty seconds.
I cannot go back to my insurance company because they will, um, probably drop me. Next thing I know, my truck was keyed as well, which was around about a month ago. I don't know the, do I told the police? They told me if I see him, do not approach him, let him know. But my whole thing is with him is that if they approach him and they find him, which they did give him a brief description of him, he may say no. So what's going to happen? He's going to keep on? I'm up every night trying to see if I can catch him and turn him over to the police. This is, this is an ongoing thing, you know? I just want to let everybody know. I talked to my city councilman about it. She has assured me that she's going to try to help me as much as possible as well as the police department. I just want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone who signed up for public comment that is in chambers who I haven't called yet? Okay, now we're going, we're going to our virtual residents. Michael Malloy. Are you still with us? Michael Malloy. WITN.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. It's a Thursday evening and, uh, Mr. President and members of the city council, um, many people are out enjoying the summer evening or doing other things while you are there busy, uh, doing work for the citizens. And, and obviously thank you for that. And, um, thank you for letting me speak for a few minutes. Also speaking about Gibraltar, um, most of you are well aware of the appalling condition of the property. The fact that there is a conservation easement that requires the property to be preserved that has been endured by the owners and even by the, um, State Division of Historic and Cultural Affairs. License and inspection has steadily not enforced the code. And through those two government agencies, um, they've enabled the owners to let a very important historical property reach a dangerous set of deterioration. Um, you all are aware, as we've sent other documents, um, requesting the city to enforce, um, the law and for the state to do theirs. A week ago on Tuesday, Mayor Przykis suggested or basically declared that he had decided that there were too many people involved with the decision-making. And he cited the state historic preservation office, the owners and the developers who are kind of, uh, working together and neighbors. Um, and said he had decided to spend $600,000 that would go to the current negligent owners. Um, and I prepared a document which was entered into the record earlier this evening and I'll email to you, the true cost, the true financial benefit to the negligent owners. Um, Frank Catamol and David Carpenter and their two LLCs, Gibraltar Preservation Group and BDK Brinkel. The financial value of the bailout that Mayor Przykis proposing is two and a half to 3.3 million dollars. Money that the city certainly definitely does not have. Um, now that would not be all of a cash transfer, but there are benefits that range from the market value of land that they want given to them or conveyed to them without cost. Profits enabled, um, for new construction on that West 16th section. They would avoid a cost of mothballing, which is probably in the 700,000 to a million dollar range, and transfer that cost from the current owners to the city of Wilmington. Um, they would avoid the costs to clear the property of overgrowth and debris, um, and other costs related to bringing the, the property into code. It's been a source of frustration for a lot of people because the, the mayor's actively said numerous times that city, Ellen, I is not going to enforce the code. And I'm always curious to how he would know such a thing. Um, I don't think it would be proper for a mayor to direct an agency not to enforce the law. Um, the mayor probably should recuse himself, given the fact that his property is adjacent to Gibraltar. He has accepted, um, about a dozen maximum campaign contributions from the developer and his siblings. And he has a long-term professional and personal relationship, um, with the Secretary of State, who's the boss of the state director of historical and cultural affairs. That is it. The document will be sent to you that substantiates what we've talked about this evening. And I do thank you for your time and thank you for serving.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone who joined us for public comment. This evening, as always, we do welcome you to come into council chambers or to join us virtually. Okay, Jerry Baumir. Jerry Baumir.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Jerry Baumir. Good afternoon to the entire residents of Wilmington and the Wilmington Council. Um, I'm here to speak on the item that's number 0311, which deals with disparity in the healthcare system. I want to definitely thank Councilwoman Fields for supporting this, uh, resolution. At the end of the day, what we're trying to promote is to make sure that the residents of Wilmington, Delaware, understand what's happening in the organ donation space. Um, the NASM report, National Academy of Sciences Medical, laid out a report that explained the disparity in the organ donation system and gave clear recommendations on what they discovered could improve the system. And their report came out after the federal government came out with rules that, uh, at the end of the day, regulate how organ donation is handled in America. Um, and what we're saying is we would like the federal government to consider the resolution and the rules that are recommended through the NASM report and to close the disparity gap in healthcare to make sure that residents in Wilmington understand that foremost is to have preventative care, to make sure you're doing everything you need to do to live a healthy lifestyle. But unfortunately, if you find yourself in a situation where you should need an organ donation, that you should have full access, information and. and no disparity in making sure that you get a proper healthcare diagnosis. And this is asking the federal government to reconsider the rules and to consider the NASM report and the recommendations they've given. And what we recommend and what we support is to educate the community about the options that they have to quality healthcare. And under this resolution right here, again, we wanna thank the Wilmington Delaware Council, the residents and Councilwoman Fields for supporting this resolution. And we are here to continue to educate the community on how important it is to live a healthy lifestyle. But unfortunately, again, should you find yourself in a situation where you need an organ donation, that you should have full access to healthcare like anyone else and to close the disparity gap. So again, thank you, the community, thank you Wilmington, and thank you Councilwoman Fields for the support on this resolution.
Thank you. WITN, do we have any one else for public comment virtually? Okay, thank you. And again, on behalf of all the council, we want to thank everyone who will join us virtually and in council chambers for your public comments. This time, we're going to move to legislative business. Just as a note for council members, just a friendly reminder that pursuant to our council rules for all legislative matters, the sponsor is entitled to speak first and last and during debate. Each council member may have, may speak twice for up to five minutes each time. Councilmember Darby.
Yes. Mr. President, I have a resolution to present. Resolution twenty-three zero twenty-five, Agenda zero three zero six, whereas Senate Substitute Number One for Senate Bill Number One, an Act to amend Title Twenty-five Delaware Code relating to residential landlord-tenant code. I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, thank you for letting me talk about this piece of legislation. This is a resolution encouraging and supporting a piece of legislation, SB Number One, that allows for tenants who are, who has a household income below two hundred percent of the federal poverty guideline to be able to have attorney or lawyer with them when they're going through the eviction process. Currently now, when you're going through the eviction process, landlords, ninety percent of them are usually represented by attorney or landlord and only ten percent of tenants are represented. So right there, you have inequity in regards to tenants' access to, one, to being able to afford a lawyer, being able to find a lawyer, and have the right representation for them to be able to fight in court when they're dealing with landlords. So this is just a resolution in support of it. We know in the city of Wilmington, we have an issue with just having affordable housing, housing period. We know we had Councilmember White, he did the walk to Dover, shout out to him for doing that, and being able to build awareness about the housing situation throughout the state of Delaware. It's not even just Wilmington, but this is an issue throughout the state that would be beneficial to so many of our residents and people outside of the city of Wilmington. So I just wanna show my support. I know we're coming to the end with the Delaware General Assembly in regards to the end of their session, which will be the end of June. So this is just in support of this piece of resolution.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
I would like to add myself as a co-sponsor and thank you, Councilmember Darby, for bringing this up again. I believe last year, we did a resolution in support to the original, I guess, SB one that was in Dover. I can't underscore how important this is. We talk about the neighborhood stabilization. We just put two point five million dollars into that fund. And it really, it's gonna make a difference, but the, this is one of the biggest pieces of legislation probably we've encountered in the state in the past ten years, plus. This is, I can't understate how important this is, that it clears the hurdles in Dover and they hear our voice, because as someone who operates in the courts, I don't specifically do landlord-tenant court, but I can tell you, it is very unequal and I have pro bono represented clients. And specifically, I remember representing a YMCA client. And, you know, this gentleman was on his last leg getting ready to move out. He was an elderly gentleman. And so, it is so unequal, so unfair. Delaware is one of the few states that actually does not have this. Philadelphia, they have legal assistance in Pennsylvania and Philadelphia. They even have law students that help. Delaware has none of that. So it's really a shame that this hasn't happened. This should have happened ten plus years ago. So whatever we can do, and I believe there's fifteen legislative days left in session, we need to push. You know, I've already made contact with folks in Dover. We need to get this over to Home Struts. It did, I believe it is funded by JFC, from my understanding. So we need to get this hurdle, because again, we have our constituents that are gonna be hurt if we don't do this. So I know the legal community is behind this. Everyone's behind it, except for the big landlords. So please, fight and let's get this over the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. I also like to be added as a co-sponsor. And seeing no other hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilmember White.
I'm sorry. Mr. President?
Yes.
Just for a point of order, can we do a roll call to establish, do we still have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes. Thank you.
Back to you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Clerk, thank you.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Darby?
Yes.
Councilmember Harley?
Yes.
Sorry, I misstated. Councilmember Oliver, she's not here. Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracy?
Yes.
And President Congo?
Yes.
That's nine yays and four absent.
Declare adopted. Also, Councilmember Oliver has been excused for the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Darby?
Yes, Mr. President, I have another resolution to present. Resolution twenty-three zero twenty-six, Agenda zero three zero seven, whereas House Substitute Number One for House Bill Number Fifty-five, an Act to amend Title Six and Title Thirty-one of Delaware Code relating to individuals who are homeless. I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yeah, so this resolution is also in support of another piece of legislation that on a state level, I'm looking and following and hoping that it passes this year. This one is creating a homeless bill of rights. So allowing this to be a discriminatory factor for someone to report that they're being discriminated against because they are homeless and it's also providing them rights, their rights for their housing status. So I'm in support of this legislation. We know we have homeless issues within the city of Wilmington throughout our state, but specifically for the city of Wilmington, we have to come up with some solutions to protect this population, to figure out a ways to get them into housing or to get them the services that they need, because a lot of them are experiencing mental health issues or substance abuse issues. So really working on providing those services and then also being able to figure out ways to protect their rights, whatever their housing status may be. If it's homeless, couch surfing, whatever it may be, being able to protect this population, I'm in full support of. Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you very much for bringing this to attention, Councilmember Darby. I do have a, I don't know much about this bill, so I would definitely, I am supportive and I would like to be a co-sponsor in terms of, but in terms of actually the implementation, that's the thing I think we need to look at. I know as a city, we're looking at reparations, which is important. One thing is, of course, guaranteed right to housing, but there has to be a funding piece to it too. And America has never done this since the time of slavery. So I think that's a talk for a different day, what the funding looks like. But if we're gonna make, if we're gonna make it guaranteed right, then it needs to be some funding mechanism from the state behind it. And state should, is a guaranteed right, just like water. So I think we need to look at that. One thing I did learn from my, when I went to the Middle East with the mayor last year, is we looked at housing in the Middle East. And, you know, there, of course, housing is guaranteed, so every person over eighteen, you know, if you're working, there is a guarantee of some land. And the government will actually assist. Now granted, they have a lot more money over there than we have. There are some models I think we can look at, maybe in a pilot kind of way. So again, I'm very supportive of this. I just hope there's a funding piece that follows next session. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, I too would like to be added as a co-sponsor. And, you know, people forget that sometimes, some folks are just a paycheck away from being homeless. And people that experience homelessness, could be anyone, could be anyone of us, it could be anyone that, you know, we come into contact with, that, you know, we work with. I recently found out that there's someone who is homeless, living in their car, but they're not just living in their car themselves, they got their four cats with them. I'm trying to figure out how she's doing that. And, you know, I'm gonna help her as best I can, but she felt like she was discriminated against by neighbors and they kind of pushed her out. And now she's trying to find a place to live with the animals that she has rescued. And one would never know the work that she does, the way that she gives, and she's still working and doing everything she needs to do, but she is homeless. And we just have such a prejudice against poor people. And it's just disgusting with the society in a country that has so much wealth and splurges the wealth in so many, you know, things that are so unnecessary. So yes, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor and we definitely as a society need to do more and let's not just have a resolution or laws, let's put some money behind it to actually do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no other hands raised, Councilmember Darby, any final comments?
Yeah, no, I would love to have money attached to this resolution for the state to really look at homelessness. But this legislation is just gonna prohibit a person from experiencing discrimination. They came up with a complaint procedure and system of enforcement so that if someone feels like they, in a public space, public transit, transportation, public parks or public buildings, if they're experiencing discrimination, they have a place they can go to at least report it. And I hope the next step will be funding to really get people off the streets and into stable housing. But that's it. Thank you for supporting.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilmember White?
Yea.
Councilmember Darby?
Yes.
Councilmember Harley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracy?
Yes.
And President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
And thank you. I'm presenting on behalf of Councilmember Oliver, Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution to present.
Declare adopted. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-three zero twenty-seven, Agenda zero three zero eight, whereas pursuant to Section Two Three Six Three of the City Code, City Council deem it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city-sponsored grant applications and proposals, including authorization for expedited grant applications when necessary prior to council's approval by resolution. And whereas the Department of Public Works has admitted-
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution is to apply, to get these applications for the federal government to give us a large sum of money, ninety-two million dollars. The grant funds will be used to perform numerous water and infrastructure projects. And some of those are going to exist, some of them are gonna be enabling future rehabilitation of the existing pump station, construct the pump station, relief sewers, and a stormwater attenuation tank in South Wilmington. And also to add an additional one MW Biogas fuel combined heat and power engine to the city's water pollution control facility, replace some of the small water mains throughout the city to eliminate any exposure that potable water may have with lead material in the distribution system, and renew all services lines and fire hydrants. Upgrade the electrical reliability and energy reduction components for the city's water plants and work on reduction of PFAS, PFAS at such plants, and expand the South Wilmington sewer separation project to B and Street C, B and C Streets. And this grant application contains no formal match requirement.
Councilmembers, have any comments? And that clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Darby?
Yes.
Councilmember Harley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Declare adopted. Councilmember Cabrera?
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-three dash zero twenty-eight, Agenda zero three zero nine, whereas pursuant to Section Two Three Six Three of the City Code, City Council deem it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city-sponsored grant applications and proposals, including authorization for expedited grant applications when necessary prior to council's approval by resolution.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Mr. President, this is another housekeeping resolution that also requires no matching grants. And the Public Works Department has submitted a grant application to the United States Office of State and Community Energy Programs. It's a block grant for energy efficiency and conservation. And the application is in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And it will be used to fund customized technical expertise to the city's efforts to reduce municipal energy use and greenhouse gas emissions in line with state and federal goals. And again, no matching funds are required.
Thank you. And seeing no hands raised from councilmembers, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Darby?
Yes.
Councilmember Harley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Councilmember Cabrera, that's it, right?
Nothing else, sir.
Declare adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present. Resolution twenty-three zero twenty-nine, Agenda zero three one zero, whereas House Bill Number One fourteen, an Act to amend Titles Sixteen and Twenty-five of the Delaware Code relating to recovery housing proposes the certification of recovery residences according to nationally recognized evidence-based standards. This voluntary certification process will support recovery residents in their efforts to uphold best practices that address the needs of individuals rehabilitating from substance abuse disorder by providing a safe and supportive community and living environment. And whereas-
Second.
Substance abuse disorder continued to play.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and, oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, hold on. Oh, I'm sorry. I move the resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second on the motion.
It's been properly moved in second that the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this is a, this is a resolution just to encourage the amendment of the Delaware Code relating to recovery housing. I just thought this was important for them to know that we definitely support them, because we have several recovery housing throughout the city of Wilmington. And I just want them to know that I do support them. And I've seen where these recovery houses, they don't have the proper healthcare for these individuals that live in them. So I'm just hoping that I can get everyone's support by sending this resolution down to the General Assembly.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor. Councilmember Mills?
Yes, I too would like to be added, co-sponsor, please.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes, please add me as well.
And Councilmember Darby?
You can add me, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, please add me as a co-sponsor, Mr. President.
And seeing no other, and Councilmember Bracy?
Please add me as well. Thanks.
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Darby?
Yes.
Councilmember Harley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays and four absent.
Declare adopted. Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-three zero three zero, Agenda zero three eleven. Whereas on November twentieth, twenty twenty, in compliance with the Executive Order on Advancing American Kidney Health, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services issued a final rule to update the conditions for coverage that organ procurement organization must meet to receive-
I move this resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that the resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. This is an issue that was brought to me and I had no clue that we as a black and brown community, we were dealing with disparities in organ donors and receiving organ donations for our community. And I just think it's imperative that we at least show support, that we are aware of the disparities that are happening in our community. And as you can, as you heard from Mr. Ballmer, he is willing to continue to provide the community in the city of Wilmington with information regarding the disparities and how our black and brown people aren't receiving these organ donations as they should. So again, I'm going to ask my colleagues for support on this resolution as well.
Thank you. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, I would like to be added, co-sponsor, and specifically thank Councilmember Fields and Jerry, Mr. Ballmer, actually. I think the first time he came locally, I actually met with him and Councilmember Fields to address his problem. So I think, you know, we did talk about how we can actually have an impact in the community so that, you know, you know, black and brown folks in Wilmington do receive the transplants they need. So there's a next step to this once we hopefully get this passed and I look forward to working with Mr. Ballmer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Councilmember Mills.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Seeing no other hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Darby.
Yes.
Councilmember Harley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fields.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilmember Mills.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Nine yeas and four absent.
Declare adopted. Councilmember Fields, did you still need to be excused?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance I call for first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-three zero twenty-three, Agenda zero three one two, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond Clearwell Storage Improvements Design Phase One Project Series of twenty-twenty-three DWSRF in order to provide the funds necessary for the city of Wilmington's design and construction in phases of a new Clearwell, providing for the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond to the Delaware Drink and Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond Clearwell Storage Improvements Design Phase One Project Series of twenty-twenty-three DWSRF in order to provide the funds necessary for the city of Wilmington's design and construction in phases of a new Clearwell, providing for the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond to the Delaware Drink and Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I move that the ordinance that has been read for first and second reading be assigned to the Finance and Economic Committee. Sorry, I make a motion.
Just need a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have another ordinance to present and call for first and second reading.
Just one second. Ordinance twenty-three zero twenty-four, Agenda zero three one three, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond Realty Improvements Project Series of twenty-twenty-three DWSRF in order to provide the funds necessary for the city of Wilmington's water plant electrical improvements, providing for the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond to the Delaware Drink and Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond Realty Improvement Project Series of twenty-twenty-three DWSRF in order to provide the funds necessary for the city of Wilmington's water plant electrical improvements, providing for the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond to the Delaware Drink and Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading and ordinance referred to the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
And, Mr. President, I have another ordinance to call for first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-three zero twenty-five, Agenda zero three one four, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond PFAS Removal Design Phase One Project Series of twenty-twenty-three DWSRF in order to provide the funds necessary for the city of Wilmington's removal of PFAS from the city's drink and water and elevation of the log removal capabilities at the Porter Filter Plant, providing for the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond to the Delaware Drink and Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action.
First reading of the ordinance.
These are some long titles. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond PFAS Removal Design Phase One Project Series of twenty-twenty-three DWSRF in order to provide the funds necessary for the city of Wilmington's removal PFAS from the city's drink and water and elevation of the log removal capabilities at the Porter Filter Plant, providing for the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond to the Delaware Drink and Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading and ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present for first and second reading.
An ordinance twenty-three zero twenty-six, Agenda zero three one five, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond Water Distribution and Transmission Improvements Lead Removal Project Series of twenty-twenty-three DWSRF in order to provide the funds necessary for the city of Wilmington's completion of both large and small diameter transmission and distribution projects across multiple service zones, providing for the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond to the Delaware Drink and Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond Water Distribution and Transmission Improvements Lead Removal Project Series of twenty-twenty-three DWSRF in order to provide the funds necessary for the city of Wilmington's completion of both large and small diameter transmission and distribution projects across multiple service zones, providing for the sale of the twenty-twenty-three bond to Delaware Drink and Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing other necessary action.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first, first and second reading and ordinance referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
And that completes my items for tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-three zero thirty-one, Agenda zero three one six, whereas pursuant to Section two, three, six, three of the City Code, City Council deem it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city-sponsored grant applications and proposals, including authorization for expedited grant applications when necessary prior to council's approval by resolution. And whereas the Department of Parks and Recreation has submitted-
I move this resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution authorizes the Department of Parks and Recreation for four grant applications to the federal government for a total amount of ten million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The grants will be used to improvements in the Tilton Park, Kirkwood Park, Holloway Park, Woodlawn Park, Cabooseco Park, Christina Park and the Canby Park. And there is no financial impact to the city where there's no matching requirement.
And seeing no hands raised from Councilmembers, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilmember White.
Yay.
Councilmember Darby.
Yes.
Councilmember Harley.
Yes.
Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eight yeas and five absent.
Declare adopted. And just as a reminder, Councilmember Fields will be excused.
Thank you so much for that.
Councilmember Mills.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present on your behalf.
Resolution twenty-three zero thirty-two, Agenda zero three one seven, whereas public participation in the electoral process is vital and guiding principle of democratic governance, which the city council desires to promote. And whereas City Charter Section two, one oh one establishes the process for fulfilling a vacant city council position between general elections.
I move this resolution be received, recorded and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that this resolution be received, recorded, filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, this resolution requests the Delaware General Assembly to amend Section two dash one oh one of the City Charter to allow the city of Wilmington to fill vacancies that arise through city council by special election.
Thank you. And as some of you may remember, this has already been passed by council and already sent down to Dover. But our state reps and some of our legislators in Dover wanted to have full council support as far as co-sponsorship. So if any council members are going to vote yes for this, I also ask that you please ask to be added as a co-sponsor. They want as many as possible to be co-sponsors so we can move forward. Councilmember Darby.
Please add me as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Harley.
Yes, please add me as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, please add me as a co-sponsor. This is long overdue.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Councilmember Cabrera.
I would like to be added as well.
Councilmember Mills.
Yes, Mr. President, please add me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. And seeing no other hands raised, Councilmember Darby.
I do have a question. Will it be noted? Because everyone isn't here tonight, like a good portion of us.
Good point.
So like, will they know that kind of? Can we draw a picture for them? Like, we have at least one, two, three, four, five people who aren't here.
Right. So maybe we should, because they won't be added as co-sponsors. We can't automatically add them.
Right.
So maybe we should hold it and then wait for, for council before we move forward.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember Bracy.
Please add me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
And that's, I know we have Law Department, but maybe, I'm supportive of that if we hold it. And then we can maybe circulate and ask for the extra co-sponsors. If that's enough time, then we can put it on the agenda next meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Mills.
Yes, I'm okay with that, Mr. President. Is it, we will be able to get it in Dover in time? That's my only concern.
Yes, we'll bring this back at our next council meeting on the fifteenth.
I won't be here on the fifteenth. I'll be away for training.
Okay. So I think it'll just be, so far, we just know of Councilmember Mills' absence, but all other twelve should be, should be here.
We'll just need the co-sponsor, right? Just need his name on it.
If I'm a co-sponsor, does it matter that I'm not in the building?
Oh, because you're already a co-sponsor, so it automatically, you'll be fine. Thank you. So can you make, Councilmember Harley?
Yes, Mr. President. My question is this, so a letter accompanying, a letter accompanying the legislation with all the council members is not sufficient? It has to be a co-sponsor on the legislation?
That's what they requested, yes.
Okay. Just asking a question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Do we, do we know the council members who aren't present, were they co-sponsors on the original one? Or that doesn't really matter in this case?
I don't have it before me, so I can't confirm that.
So should Councilmember Mills, he should make the motion to hold? Or should I?
It should be the person that you did present on your behalf.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. President.
There's no motion to hold. You just hold it.
Okay.
Yes, I requested to be held, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, this time we will move to petitions and communications. Councilmember White.
None at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Darby.
Yes, I have just one for tonight. This weekend on June third, in partnership with Teams. Teams is a program who works on the grassroots, on the ground with people battling with substance abuse and mental health. So they provide a lot of services, wraparound services. And with another program called One in Seven B, they have mobile showers and laundry facility for people who are unhoused. We are partnering this weekend to be at, let me get the address, at twenty-two fourteen North Market Street, right off of Gordon Street. It's from eleven AM to two thirty PM. So if you know anyone who's in need of a shower, hygiene products, underwear, period products, we're going to have all of those items there. So we want to make this a regular thing that happens on twenty-fourth and Market. So this is kind of like a pilot. I'm really excited for One in Seven B. That organization has a mobile shower. I was looking for one for the longest. I was about to use my Arbor funds to try to get one through another nonprofit, but I'm so happy that I was able to connect with Mark, who's providing that service, who will start providing services in Wilmington. He's currently in Newark. But he was able to come up to the city and do this. So I am so excited that we're going to have these services because North Market Street, especially where that Gordon intersection is, there's a lot of people there with a lot of needs. And then being able to provide wraparound services there, I think will be great. And we just had two violent events, two shootings in a matter of a month, right on twenty-fourth and Market where that Gordon Street alleyway is. So that's the only thing I have on my agenda for tonight. So if you know anyone in need, if you're part of a social service organization that deals with unhoused people, substance abuse, mental health, and they need just a shower that can change someone's life. So yes, so please come out.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President, first is a housekeeping matter for City Council. The Finance Committee meeting for June is this upcoming Monday at five PM. So please stay tuned. We have a lot to talk about, a lot of new reports. Obviously, OED will have some reports as well about the procurement changes that we'll be making. So it's overall, it's going to be a pretty robust meeting, so please join us. As a housekeeping matter on the West Side, there are just a few announcements. Number one, we have Open Streets, which is, West Side grows in conjunction with many of our community partners. That is next Saturday, June tenth, from one to four PM. It's on South Franklin Street. We also have the, next Sunday begins the St. Anthony's Italian Festival. So please, all of you, join us on the West Side celebrating, again, the cultural heritage of the St. Anthony's Church and the history behind it. You know, folks from far and wide come throughout the tri-state. It's always a great event, so please join us on the West Side for that event. And also, just as a housekeeping matter, for also folks on the West Side that has garnered a lot of interest is the Rodney Reservoir Group, or I think it's called Rodney Reservoir Working Group. We actually have just made the appointment, me and Councilmember Fields in conjunction with the administration, I believe President Congo. We're addressing this issue head-on and we will be scheduling public meetings soon so we can talk about how we can better and improve the environment on the West Side for the folks in Cool Springs. And then lastly, as a housekeeping matter, of course, I know that recently there was the club giveaway by the Wilmington Police Department. Please stay mindful, continue to, you know, keep all eyes peeled as there has been a rise in car thefts. So please, again, don't leave a car running or leave the keys and the extra keys in the vehicle per Wilmington Police. If you see something, please report it to the emergency line, if it's emergency or non-emergency line if it's not emergency. So again, it's getting warm, so please, everyone, stay safe and sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, first, I want to congratulate the Friends of Wilmington Parks for a successful fundraiser this evening to raise money for the different parks that we have and improvements for those parks along the way. Parks are definitely attribute to have in our city, and you see all the families, children, everybody just enjoying it. So again, want to thank them for all the work that they're doing to keep our parks beautiful. Also, the Lady Bug Festival is happening this weekend on Ju- Also, the Lady Bug Festival is happening this weekend, um, on June second, and that is held in the Lower Market Street area, which is like the one-hundred block and two-hundred block. It's actually a great event. Um, it brings a lot of regional artists and, uh, it's going to be a lot of great entertainment. It's all going to be women, um, thus the Lady Bug. There is a lot going on tomorrow, I will say. We also have the Wilmington Art Loop, uh, which runs from five to eight PM here at the City County Building is one of the locations. But up and down Market Street Mall and other areas of the West Side, you'll find, um, areas where you can go and see local art. Some of it is national art and different people that, um, exhibit. So please, uh, come out and enjoy that the first Friday of the month, and that happens tomorrow. And as you heard here earlier, um, at five-thirty, the month's main action will have their walk. So maybe we could start the walk and then head over to these different events. And last but not least, um, National Caribbean American Heritage Month kicks off today. And Eunice Lefate does have an event taking place, um, as well as being a part of the Art Loop tomorrow evening. Uh, and she, again, is in the two-hundred block of Market Street. So there is a lot going on, um, tomorrow, and there's just a lot going on in Wilmington. So it's great to have a vibrant city where you have to pick and choose. And, um, I know that my colleague missed at the Italian Festival, but what the heck happened with the Greeks? That kicks off. Hello? So the Greek Festival also kicks off, uh, the following week. A lot of folks like to go there for lunch. Um, you can grab your lunch. You can order ahead of time, curbside pickup. And of course, there's a lot of great music, uzo, some wine, and opa-opa. So I hope to see a lot of our residents out and about enjoying, um, the city of festivals. That's what Wilmington is. Soon Clifford Brown is right around the corner, uh, so that's coming up as well. So I hope to see our constituents to come out with their families and enjoy and support our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. I just want to say, uh, first of all, thank you to the administration and to Director Smith for an amazing job they did on Haynes Park, uh, rededication yesterday, reopening, and the kids. And, uh, the thought that was put into the park was, was very nice. And then, um, to all the graduates, just wish them a congratulations with all these graduations happening this weekend. And one special shout-out to, to one of my, my clients, Kanaya R., who you would not think in twenty-twenty-three would, you know, you would be having a first, but she's the first of her family to graduate high school. So congratulations, Kanaya. I'm so proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just one quick thing, tomorrow is going to be our first ninety-degree, ninety-degree day, um, of the season. So if you have any seniors in, in your family or in your community, make sure to check on them. Make sure that their fan is, they have a fan or their, um, home is properly ventilated. It's also, um, a really, uh, good time to check on those that have health issues that are in your community. Allergy season is really bad right now, so, um, as we're ending our, um, city council health challenge, I implore everyone to check on those, um, in your community that, uh, may, um, have some needs. Um, and that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Um, just regarding, uh, this evening's public comment, we had several members of our community who came in, kind of gave us their concerns. So I'm just, again, requesting, uh, thanking staff in advance and for your past work, just, um, reminding staff to please, uh, to make sure that we're following up with those, uh, concerns that were made publicly during public comment and that we're keeping, uh, the district council person and the large and all council members who want to be a part of helping those residents, uh, in the loop. I guess one kind of weighs on me heavily because I have been involved in it, and that situation is extremely volatile. And, uh, I'm not sure what else that we can do as a council, but I'm glad that there is someone from WPD still here with us this evening, uh, so that you can relay to your colleagues how, um, how fragile and how volatile that situation is. We have a father, we have a man who, we have a father and a husband who's trying to protect his family. He's being extremely patient. Um, I'm not sure how long his patience is going to last. And I tried to put him in contact with, um, the police department, but we heard what they came up here and said this evening. It was pretty disturbing because when he was at the police station, he had, uh, he, he called me, said he was going to the police station and that, uh, he wanted me to hear the conversation. And the way he was talked to by whoever was on, on duty that night was extremely disrespectful. Again, I was just trying to keep him, keep him calm and, and not react, uh, because again, he doesn't want to end up on Twelfth Street, like you said, in Gander Hill. But, uh, we have a man who is at his wits' end. So I'm just asking again for the police department to please take some kind of action, uh, because I just don't know how long that family can, can remain patient. And there are others in the community who want to take action, and we just don't want to, want it to come to that. So again, uh, if you can relay that to your colleagues, that would be extremely helpful. There are also several, um, Juneteenth celebrations that are going to be happening later this month, and I will announce those at, at our next meeting. And again, if anyone needs any scholarship funding or any, uh, have any concerns in general for any of us at, at city council, please give us a call at, uh, three oh-two-five-seven-six-two-one-fourty. Your number is three oh-two-five-seven-six-two-one-fourty. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.